Very good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Today we're going to have a really special day going through Porto City, talking about the Renaissance, renewal and reinvention. And we are delighted and really honoured to have Mr Bedro Begannen. Bedro is the city councillor of Porto City Council. And for us in Urban Design Group, this is special in the sense you've got an architect/urbanist, but he's got as well political hat as well and he deals on daily basis with lots of political issues, but also with a lot of challenges in Porto City. Bedro is, if I may say, he is the councillor and really responsible for the urbanism, public spaces and housing at Porto City. But also, he is a chair of two interesting charities as well. One of them or two of them to do with affordable and social housing as well. So he's got really an interesting combination in terms of rule and responsibilities throughout the city and when it comes to as well implementation at various scales between urbanism, urban design, but even zooming into housing and housing challenges in the city. So the floor is yours, Bedro, and we are really delighted you joined us and we are looking forward to your talk. Thank you once again.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Let me start by thanking the invitation to talk to you guys from the Urban Design Group, namely to Usam and also to Robert and Anna. So as Usam said, I'm a part of the municipal council of Porto and perhaps I should start this talk, this brief talk, explaining how municipalities work in Portugal. We have a political structure that has two seats of power, if you want. One is the municipal council where the executive powers stand. And the other one is the municipal assembly that has the responsibility to approve, well, things like the budget and selling and buying property of a certain amount of value, structural decisions, and they also have the responsibility of controlling the executive actions that we undergo in governing the municipality. Those two seats, if you want, they are subject to elections. So I'm a city councillor, so I sit in the municipal council. Those who sit in the municipal assembly are called the municipal deputies. We are all elected officials, so I'm part of a list of people that were elected by our fellow citizens of Porto. And we do have a specificity politically wise, which is... Sorry, I cannot get rid of this bar on top. I don't know why. But as I was saying, I'm part of an executive which is composed of independent people. So we don't belong to any political party. I don't belong to any political party, the mayor doesn't either. The majority of the municipal councils with executive responsibilities, we do not belong to any political party, which is a pretty unique situation Europe-wise to have a city with the size of Porto being ruled by a body of, well, just citizens that organize themselves and manage to be elected to take care of the city council. As Usam said, that's where I sit in the municipal council. I do have the responsibility of three departments. The Department of Urbanism, and that comprises the construction licenses, but also urban design and urban planning. I'm in charge of the Public Space Department as well as the Housing Department. And I'm the chair of three municipal companies. One is GoPorto, which is the company responsible for the public works, the roadworks and the new buildings that are not destined to the housing function. And I'm the chair of two other municipal companies. One is Porto Vivo, which is responsible for the affordable housing policy as well as for the rehabilitation of certain designated parts of the city. And I'm the chair of Domos Social, who takes care and manages the housing stock that is destined to, well, to social housing, to the most deprived strata of society, if you want. So yeah, about Porto. I'm going to structure this talk in four chapters, if you want. One is a brief introduction to Porto, its recent history and its urban condition these days. The second is to talk a little bit about the renewal, the regeneration and rehabilitation of the city. The third chapter is, well, some of the toolkits that we use in order to accomplish what we want to do in the city, namely infilling density, cohesion and sustainability of the territory. And the last chapter regards, well, if you want, the material aspects of our actions. Because I do have this double role, if you want. I'm an architect, I'm a trained architect. I used to do architecture before I was elected for almost 20 years. But now I have a political role, so I have these two hats, if you want. I never forget that I'm an architect and a planner, if you want, but I have this transitory role as an official, elected official in the city. An introduction to Porto. Well, Porto, in fact, is a larger city than its municipality. This is the true shape of the city, if you want. Perhaps it's more easily understood by night time. The metropolitan area of the city of Porto has roughly 1.7 million people living in it. But if you talk about Greater Porto, we're talking about 1.5 million people. And this Greater Porto comprises several municipalities. Porto is a municipality in the centre. It acts as, if you want, the city centre for this larger urban territory. But in fact, the territory of Greater Porto, which is the true shape of the city, is divided into six different municipalities, six different councils. And that poses, well, some specific questions and problems regarding some aspects of the everyday, day-to-day problems that we have and also some structural problems like the housing problem or the mobility problems that we have in the city. I am responsible, well, I'm part of the council that is responsible for the management of the municipality of Porto and not the other ones. The municipality of Porto has 240,000 inhabitants. Well, that's the nighttime population, obviously, because we act as a centre of this larger metropolitan area. So we do have probably twice as much people working and using the city in the daytime period. But the number of inhabitants of the municipality is 240,000 people. The city centre of Porto, the traditional historical centre, where it all started, lies near the mouth of the river Douro, well, in an area which was protected from the ocean, but it's directly connected to the ocean and to commercial activities by ship via the river Douro. This is the territory, well, the chart of the hypsometry of the territory of the municipality of Porto. The lighter the higher, the darker the lower. And what we can see from this chart is that the geography of Porto is characterized by its territory as being, well, a plane that gently goes from the highest point to the Atlantic Ocean on the left with two notable exceptions. One is the River Douro Valley with very steep margins, almost to its mouth, almost reaching its mouth. It is a very imposing topography. And the other one is the eastern part of the city in a civil parish that is called Campanha, which is the most deprived area of the city with some specific problems. And that area is a priority of the municipality. And one of the specificities that that territory, that civil parish, has is its topography. You find steep slopes there that you can only find in the river Douro, otherwise in the rest of the city. Perhaps this reality is better shown in this chart. These are the slopes of the roadways or the streets of the city. And you can see that alongside the River Douro, there's a lot of streets with inclinations larger than 9%. And then you only find that sort of inclination of slopes in Campanha, in the eastern part of the city of Porto. But this shows that the topography, the hilly characteristic of the territory of Porto is something that pretty much defines the city and pretty much defines its urban conditions and urban tissue, if you want, urban fabric. The natural drainage system of the territory is characterized by, well, several streams of water, creeks and small rivers that constitute this natural drainage system of the city. This is something that is quite important, or was quite important, in designing our masterplan, our city masterplan, as I will explain later on on this talk. Perhaps this dramatic presence of the topography can be summarized in this picture. This is where it all started. This is the medieval part of the city, if you want, or the Roman settlements that eventually led to the city of Porto, were installed here. The lower part of the city is, well, the harbour, the port of the city, where commercial activities existed, where economical activity existed. And the higher part of the city was, if you want, sort of an acropolis where the bishop has his palace and the cathedral, the city cathedral lies. This was a bishop's city, not a king's city, which is something that also characterizes a part of the collective personality of the city. It's a very strong, it has a very strong personality, as probably Anna can confirm. We are very proud of being from Porto City, we are very, very part of our city. And there's always this sort of tension between the people of the city and the power, whatever the power is. And when the power was the bishop's power, there was a power struggle, if you want, from the people of the city that only was resolved in the 16th century. And perhaps this dramatic change in heights of the topography can be illustrated by one of our bridges, it's one of the yax libres of the city, the Luís Primaio Bridge, with its double deck. The upper deck used to be a road, now it's completely death in the well, it's used only by the subway system or the metro system. And the lower deck is a road connecting the lower part of both cities, Porto in the North Bank and Vilanova de Galha in the South Bank, which is another municipality, but it acts as being the same city, if you want. Porto these days is pretty much a consolidated city with very few opportunities to expand the urbanization by using new lands. So the only way to densify the city will be to increase the building capacities and probably to build up rather than extending the new buildings, with a notable exception in the eastern part of the city where we have a park, but also some areas for expansion. And a bit in the west, which is the richest, more posh, if you want, area of the city of Porto. It's called the Foz do Douro, which still has an opportunity to build a new, to build new urban territory. Porto has become in the last, well, decade or 15 years, a vibrant city. It is an economical, strong city, it is the second city of the nation. It became a touristy hub since 2004, 2005, 2006. It was not a touristy city before that. Now it's, well, the city centre is pretty much overwhelmed by this activity. It's one of the specificities or one of the specific issues that we are trying to control. And it is a centre for innovation and talent, much based on its academy and its universities. It is the largest academy of the nation. And this is where we are, well, betting, if you want, is to try to retain the talent that we produce and even try to attract new talent, namely from Portuguese-speaking countries, namely Brazil and others, trying to reinforce the role of the city as an innovation centre. And we are being successful in this strategy. But this is the story of the last 15 years, if you want, 10 to 15 years. Because before that, we did have an extended period of decadence, especially in the city centre, in the historical centre and in downtown. And that is a story that I want to show you, to talk about. The 20th century has been pretty much a tale of decline for the second half of the century. In 1892, this chart is from 1892, it was the first survey of the whole municipality. Porto was what we now call the city centre or the historical centre and its downtown area. And with a settlement in the mouth of the river Douro by the ocean. And then what you had was a ring of farms or farmlands and only with urbanisation alongside the historical roads that came out of the city centre. We have five historical roads that still characterize pretty much the urban structure of the city. Sorry, I have to do something. Back then, the city harbour or the city port was the river. So the activity of this area was very strong. It was where the city happened. It was the period of the construction of the big infrastructures. For instance, this is a picture from the 19th century of the construction of the bridge that you just saw. It was an area bustling with activity, loading and unloading, etc. But this all changed in 1940 or in the 40s, when the state and the city decided that the harbour was not safe anymore. The river Douro is not an easy river to get in and out from the ocean. So the decision was taken to build a new port, a new harbour, on the outskirts of the city of Porto in Metuzinho, in a neighbouring municipality to the north of the city. And the construction of major urban infrastructures in the periphery of the city centre. And that led to a loss of exclusivity of the economic activity in the city centre and eventually to the fleeing of the middle class and, well, the upper classes. And so what we saw through a long period in the 20th century was that the city centre was only inhabited by the poorest of the poor that weren't able to escape the poor living conditions that there had back then. This is a survey from 1967 to 1969, for instance. So you see, this is an actual survey of a given block in the historical centre. So you see that the amount of people that were living and the conditions that people were living. It was an area of exclusion, an area of poverty, an area of decay, an area of, well, derelict housing stock and derelict buildings for the large majority of its territory. I'm talking about the historical centre, talking about the medieval centre of the city. Only the poorest of the poor, as I said, were not able to escape these thousand conditions. And this led to a loss of importance of, if you want, of the historical centre in the sample of urban areas of the municipality. The municipality of Porto reached a peak of population in 1981. We were roughly 320,000 people in 1981. We have lost population from 1981 until 2017. We managed to stop the bleedage. And we are now growing population slowly, but we are. But the historical centre is losing population since 1940. And the weight, the relative weight of the population living in that area has constantly strengthened from the 19th century until these days. In 1864, the city centre accounted for more than 50% of the total population of the city. Now it accounts to less than 10%. Outside of the city centre, we did have a, well, not a late but intense period of industrialization of the city that led to a large influx of people from the neighbouring countryside to the city of Porto. And this strong growth of population was solved, the living conditions, with a specific typology, an informal typology, that became the norm, if you want, of the working-class settlements. We call them ilhas, that's the Portuguese word for islands. And this typology is characterized by occupying the traditional plots of the city, which are very thin and narrow and long, with the major house alongside the road or the street. But in the backyard, units of four by four metres were constructed, very precarious units. And those were called houses. Those were households for families without kitchen, without sanitary installations and so on. That was the informal way that the city found to accommodate the large influx of people to the city. We still have this, there was a period where 30% of the population of the city lived in this sort of dwellings. Now it's 5%. 10,000 people still live in units like this. And you can always, you can almost explain the urbanism and the urban development of Porto throughout the 20th century as a struggle to try to get rid of these housing conditions. This is a picture from Google Maps. I just turned it to black and white, but this is the current status of a specific block in the city of Porto. These were very poor housing conditions. There is this tendency in some, well, in some of my colleagues, some of my architect colleagues, to create a myth about the advantages of having these neighbourhood units. Those were neighbourhood units, so people helped themselves. But it was nevertheless the materialization of the urbanism of poverty. The state and the city tried to get rid of those housing conditions throughout the 20th century. From 1950 onwards, we had several campaigns of building public houses or social houses. We now have 50 social housing neighbourhoods that belong to the municipality. Those are the ones here in these red areas. So these are the current, the present social housing neighbourhoods superimposed on the 19th century chart. So you see that the urbanization of the city was made through separate plans rather than a comprehensive urban planning. That explains to a large degree the organic structure of the urban fabric of the city of Porto. These houses were built, the largest majority of them, using the modernist, you know, the modernist way of building and thinking about housing and building. But this led to a specificity of the city of Porto. 10% of all dwellings in the city are public-owned by the municipality and 13% of the inhabitants of the city are tenants of the municipality. This is very rare in our country. Only Lisbon has a percentage that is close to these figures because the national average is 2% of all housing stock is public and 98% is private. In Porto, that relationship is different. It's 10% public and 90% privately owned. So this was, if you want, the way that the state and the city tried to fix the housing problem regarding the poor housing conditions of the working class that lived in the city. In terms of the city centre and the historical centre, the first plan that we had, the comprehensive plan, was what we called the Ozel Plan. It was a general plan for the city in 1962, made by the French urbanist Robert Ozel. It advocated the demolition of a large block, a large part of the medieval part of the city, substituting those buildings with modernistic blocks and parking spaces and parking lots. Sometimes it's good that plans are not fulfilled because in 1967, so seven, only five years after the Ozel Plan was approved, the municipality contracted, or Fernando Tavre, who is one of the forefathers of the Porto School of Architecture, to look at this specific area of Barredu and Sei, in the medieval area of the city. And he came up with a completely different approach and a completely different strategy, which eventually started the rehabilitation momentum that we still have in this city and in this nation with a very comprehensive approach, taking care of the building, but also taking care of the social aspects of urban rehabilitation, taking care of the people that lived in this territory. It advocated for the state and the city to buy every plot in certain designated city blocks, taking the people out of those buildings, renewing the buildings and retrofitting the buildings and then putting the original inhabitants back into their houses, but now new houses and rehabilitated houses. This eventually led in 1974, after our revolution, when we got rid of our dictatorship and became a democracy, to the creation of, well, of an entity called Comissariado para a Renovação Urbana da área do Rio e da Barreira do Cruaribe. That put in force the strategy that was defined earlier by Fernando Tavre. This was an expensive way of doing things, not very practical. It's lengthy methodology of intervention. But in terms of architectural discipline and urban discipline, it was a very interesting, a very interesting approach because it was, again, a very comprehensive approach and that took care of the pre-existing values, namely architectural values and urbanistic values. And this care, this taking care of this territory by this commission, eventually led to the designation of the city centre of Porto, or the medieval part of the city, as a world heritage site in 1996, which was the first, you know, the first shatter of this renaissance of the city centre. The millennium started with a new opportunity, challenge and opportunity. We were designated in 2001 as the European City of Culture. We've used that event to build new cultural venues. This one is the construction of the Casa da Música, the House of Music, by Rem Koolas, the Dutch architect. But at the same time, we used, so if you want, we were trying to do, we were trying to use something like the Bilbao Effect, using a large building to change the perception that people have of their own territory and city. But at the same time, we tried to use, if you want, the Barcelona Effect, trying to take care of the public realm in 2001, using the European City of Culture event as the pretext to subdivide certain areas of the city centre, of downtown. Now I'm talking about downtown. We did, well, public tenders, public competitions. We chose several architects' teams. And we had, well, the city was a mess 24 years ago or 25 years ago because it was a one construction site. But the end result was a qualified public realm where people rediscovered the beauty and the interest of the city centre. In 2003, Cruaribe was extinguished because it was really expensive and it became rather inefficient, the approach that that entity had towards the rehabilitation of the city centre. And in 2004, we created a new company named Porto Vivo S R U, so Sociedade Rehabilitação Urbana, Urban Rehabilitation Society, So Sociedade Rehabilitação Urbana, Urban Rehabilitation Society, which is, which was a joint venture between the state and the city. Um this uh, this company eventually was municipalized in two thousand and nineteen, and it's now one of the companies that I'm the chair of. But now it's a a company that is owned one hundred percent by the municipality. At the same time, or in the turn of the century, in the turn of the millennium, we were, we were studying the construction of our metro system, which which is a light rail system. It's a hybrid system. It goes underground in the city center, it runs on the on the on the surface, on the on the periphery, and it 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 does some inter- interurban service as well to to some cities in the north of metropolitan area. But we've, we've used those those works not only to 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 build the system, but also to, again, um regenerate the the public realm that was affected by by the by its construction. For instance, this is the main square of the city. It's called the Aliás Avenue, so uh uh Ally Avenue. Um you see those two vents, those two circles underneath, there's a, there's a there's a metro, a metro sta- station. So we we've used those works to, you know, um regenerate the 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 public space in the in the city center. Nevertheless, when we were elected by the the first time, well, the mayor was elected. I was only elected elected in two thousand and seventeen. But the first, the first term of the mayor, I was in the municipality, but not as a city councillor. Uh the 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 nation, the newspapers still stated that one third of the heart of the Porto was in ruins. And that seventy percent of the buildings needed uh uh works, renewal works and and rehabilitation works. Um we were to some degree lucky, because as I said earlier, since just uh from two thousand and six onwards, we became a touristic city. This is the 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 passenger traffic in our airport. In two thousand and six, we had less more or less three million people, uh three million passengers going through our our um airport. No, in in two thousand and twenty-three, we've reached fifteen millions. Um so we 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 started becoming a touristic spot in the city, in in the nation. And we are now the second um destination in Portugal, which is something never heard of. Usually, the the big attractors were Lisbon, Madeira and Algarve. Now now Porto is is really strong in terms of city break and cultural and cultural tourism, if you want. Um this was a good thing in the in the in the sense that it brought a huge amount of investment because specifically to the city center. Because when we're talking about tourism, we're talking about the city center. We're talking about the historical high areas of of the city. And that allowed us to compress an effort of rehabilitation that we thought it would take, well, five decades or three decades or four decades uh into a period of of ten years. Um that is um palpable, you 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 can see tangible, you can you can see that uh in, for instance, the the management, the management plan that we have for the for the historical center, um the World Heritage Sites, the World Heritage Sites. Um we've seen that the conditions of uh of the the buildings improved dramatically. The use of the buildings also also increased dramatically. And now we have a, well, a success story, if you want. Uh because eighty percent of the the buildings in this territory are in medium or good shape. So we 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 did manage to compress this effort. There's still a lot to be done, obviously, but we thought it would take a a much longer, much longer time. So the story of the the center, the center of the city is a story that comes from its eight days to the decay, to to being a a territory of exclusion with drugs, decadence and crime, to the resurgence of of um of its public realm, and finally to the 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 coming of the touristic activity, which is a good slash bad thing. I'll talk a little bit more about that, because too much of a good thing is a bad thing, as everybody knows. Um at the same time, in the outskirts of the city center, still in the municipality, uh in the last twenty-five years, we started a, well, a huge campaign, huge campaigns of of rehabilitating the social housing neighborhoods, taking care of the people that live there, treating citizens as citizens. And that's very important, because when you, when you when you treat citizens, when when you treat people as citizens, they behave as citizens. When you you exclude people, you you start having latency and crime and so on. So this is an investment that the city is 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 doing in its own housing stock. Um again, it's a huge investment, it's a huge burden in the in the in the budget of the city. Uh but it's something that has to be to be done. It's our responsibility, our social responsibility. And it's the price to pay to have a qualified and and uh, well, interesting and peaceful city, if you want. These are all examples of social housing neighborhoods. The average rent that these people um pay is sixty euros, six zero euros. So it's really for the most most impoverished uh um strata of of society, if you want. We are now starting to take care of the public space of these neighborhoods, not only the buildings. We obviously started to invest in the people's house. Uh now that we've ended these these campaigns, we are starting to uh invest in the rehabilitation of the of the public realm of these social ne- uh social neighborhoods, bringing, 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 bringing them back to the, to the urban fabric, if you want, trying to to to, again, to increase the social cohesion and territorial cohesion of of the city. What are the current challenges that we are facing? Well, one is a bad consequence of a good circumstance, which is tourism. Tourism brought a large invest- a large, a large investment in real estate, but at the same time, it's it helps to increase, it's it's not the only, the only factor, but it's one major uh factor for the the increase in in the in the housing, in the housing prices. We are undergoing an affordability crisis in the nation and in the city. Uh at the same time, this increasing the economic activity brought congestion to the city. And either traffic congestion or motorized traffic congestion, but also the use of the public space is now pretty much pressured in the city center. And another risk that we had, that we have is the loss of identity, that is one of the assets that every city has. Every city is different from from the next city. Uh and we're trying to safeguard that specificity, uh trying to maintain what is, what is authentic and what is, what makes Porto, Porto, if you want. Um we're trying to, uh, well, we we continue to invest in rehabilitating the public property in the historical center, um promoting housing for the, well, not only for the most poor people, but also to the middle class now in in the affordable, in the affordable market. Um we are, we we are um investing heavily in uh in uh in the constru- in the in the in expanding our metro system. So mobility is a large issue in the in the city. We've used the 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 system. I I think we have a a good light rail system and and the stations are by Eduardo Sotmora and and Albert Cesar Viera, the architects that I'm that are hearing me probably recognize the the names. But we are undergoing uh major works of expansion with two new lines, uh new stations. So the, what you will see, those who visit us next May, will be a city that in in some designated areas of the city, it's a pretty much a construction site. So uh what uh, this is, this is a warning. Some, some areas of the city are a bit messy. Uh for instance, the 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 right lower um picture is from the 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 central square that I ju- that I just showed you, the the Ally Avenue. Um but it has, we we, as I said, we are building two new uh rail uh rail lines and one metro bus line to the, to the, to Fosh, to to the western part of the city. So that's a huge investment in in mobility aspects, as well as building new intermodal um terminals. This one is the largest associated, this is the bus terminal, a new bus terminal associated with the with the main railroad, railway station of the city. On top of it, we've built a public park that we are, well, for people to to use this area, not only as loading and unloading area for for buses, but also increasing the public spaces, the green public spaces of of the city, which is a strategy, strategy of this uh, of this government, local government, and also a strategy of our of our general plan. So underneath this uh, underneath this this park, there's this bus station. And in the city center, we are trying to come up, well, we came up with a strategy of getting rid of uh of um motorized transportation, if you want. Um pretty much inspired in other examples of other European cities, like Paris, London and and Barcelona with the with the super block experiences. So we are now, when 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 we're going to, when we reopen the city after we we end the construction of the of the metro system, of the new metro line, uh we are aiming at designating some structural roads as being car roads, but the other ones will be destined to soft mobility, slow, slow speeds of circulation, or even pedestrianized streets, coming up with a comprehensive network of um of uh qualified roads, uh well, that that increase the the livability of the city center. These are, these are examples of works that we've already done following this strategy, but also uh some tactical urbanism. We are, we are using tactical urbanism to to try and experiment closing some some streets, um trying to 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 come up with the with the with the, well, with with more humane public, public space and coming up with a specific signage that signals that some roads are specifically designated for pedestrians uh and then bicycles and only then uh cars, that those 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 marks, those are pavement marks, and these are road signs that we are implementing in the city center and the the medieval part of of the city. We are trying to, um, well, how am I doing in time? Yeah, ten, ten more minutes, ten, fifteen more minutes. Um we are trying to use these tools, these urban urban planning tools, infilling density cohesion and sustainability, because we want, one of the, one of the ways we are tackling the shortage of or the or the increase of of the housing prices is to increase the housing stock. That means building more, increasing the density. Uh but also, but at the same time, we are investing heavily in urban design, not 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 only on on the planning, on on the hard planning, hard urban planning, which takes ages in this country. Uh but we are using the tools of the architects, the 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 soft, what what we call uh soft planning, which is a, well, mid-scale urban design. Uh and and this, this is, this is important and useful, uh because it creates a framework for the urbanistic decision that I have to make whenever I issue a um uh building permit, but also for anyone who wants to invest in the city, they know what the, what the, what the municipality thinks about what the future of certain designated areas of the city um should be in the in the future. This is, well, one of the shards of the of the municipal uh general plan, or if you want, the master plan of the city. Um we, as I said, we, in in some areas of the city, we we've increased building density, um namely the 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 light yellow areas that you see here, the orange and the browns. Those are morphological type um typological slash morphological criterias that we apply uh to 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 uh to grant um building permits. But on the other, on the on the light yellow and and the, this is the, in the yellow areas, we've increased the building capac- uh capabilities. Uh and as I said, we are using some opportunities that we still has have to uh to uh, well, to build a new, to build new stretches of urban fabric. This one is the one, the spot in the west, in in Fosh, in Fortodo, as I I said previously. We've came up with a, well, with a plan. We we are now in the process of doing the allotments. We are um working with twenty-one private private owners, which is a rather a very big challenge. Um this avenue, for instance, was planned since nineteen seventeen. We still, still weren't, were not able to build it, but I think that we are now in on 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 a good, on a good on a good spot to to finally have the conditions to start building it. And at the same time, build some parks and and new squares. Uh well, it's a a stretch of the city that is going to, you know, to sew the 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 local, the local fabric. Or we're trying to influence, already approved the allotments, using those soft planning uh tactics that I that I mentioned earlier. Um and this approach to uh to urban design has been very useful now, because we are, we were lucky. We are now starting nationwide, the the process of construction, construction, constructing the first high-speed train between Porto and Lisbon. Um that will, will, we we will have, we will have, we will have to have a an expansion of our current railway station. But we expanded that effort and we are coming up with a plan, well, an urban plan, formally approved and so on. But that plan is using those studies, those urban studies, those urban designs that we that we we were doing in the last five years, uh to to come up with a, with a comprehensive, comprehensive new urban, urbanistic plan that will, you know, organize the growth that we will for sure have in the eastern part of the city because of the construction of this new line and the expansion of the current, of the current um station. This is another chart from a, from a, the, from the the city master plan, uh its, its ecological structure. In a nutshell, we're investing heavily in qualifying the 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 green, but also the blue structure uh with certain specific conditions regarding those streams of water that constitute the natural drainage system of the of the territory. Uh we we are, we've built several new parks in the last ten years using, well, natural-based solutions to come up with the, with strategies to mitigate the effects of um, the effects of the climate change that we are undergoing. Um it's all working already, so, or we're using large um infrastructure constructions, like like pipes connecting to sewer seats, to sewage treatment plants, um building a new park on top of, on top of that hydraulic hydraulic infrastructure, or um um coming up with strategies to force private investments, like for instance, the building of a new hotel, to build a new urban park that is going to be rented, that is going to be given to the to the city and to its inhabitants and to its, to their, to the, to the municipality. This is an, and uh, this, this new park in the city center in Lapa is being construction, constructed as we speak by a, by a private company. Uh or this, or this, or using, you know, those in-between spaces. Um for instance, connecting three social neighborhoods uh uh that we have in Campanha, in the in the eastern part of the city, and coming up with a park, the the design of this new park was participated. So these paths that you see were paths that were informally used by people that lived in the surrounding area, and we are not formalizing those those pathways into a, into a designed new urban park that acts as as a, as blue, you know, for 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 this rather hetero- 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 heterogeneous um territory. Uh infilling, we are building new um housing blocks for the middle class in the midst of the social housing neighborhoods, trying to come up with a, a, an healthy mixture of of people uh from all strata of of society, using those investments to build the new parks in in the surrounding areas of the of the new housing blocks that we are uh building, or uh launching, we just launched uh two tenders for private, uh public-private partnerships for trying to to come up with with private investments that are going to build uh more than six hundred new units in in this PPP model in Campanha or in um, or in uh in Sufata, in the in the city center. Um the tender was launched in a, in January, it will end in in the middle June. So we are hopeful that we we can, we can align, we can align public interest with private initiative. That's what what we are, we are aiming at. Um but we still have, after all this, we still have nine hundred and fifty-seven of those islands that I, that I talked previously, so five percent of the population still lives in this, in this kind of dwellings. Uh and that led us to a change in our strategy. We we now, if you, uh we cannot now, we don't speak of a um, the problem of the ilhas. We now talk about the condition of the ilhas, because a problem is something you solve, you fix. A condition is something you live with and you qualify. One hundred and twenty years of trying to get rid of those islands, we still have roughly one thousand of them. So it's time for us to come up with a new strategy, because obviously we cannot get rid of all of them. So we are, we we are now experimenting a pilot project, trying to transform this in Lomba uh using European money, uh destined to housing, to the housing um initiatives. The municipality bought six of those units, because uh what you see here is six plot of lands with forty-seven houses. And we're, we're going to transform this into this. And we, we are going to transform this into this. We have launched tenders and the construction will, is, is due to, to, to begin, uh, in the next coming weeks, in, 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 in April. So this is what we want to, this territory. If we are successful, we are, we are experimenting a new approach, a radically new approach to this condition of the, the, of the ilhas, of the islands of, of Porto. In terms of public realm and its rehabilitation, we are not looking to the whole of the municipality's territory and not only to its city centre or the medieval part of the city, to those streets that don't see any work for the last five decades, five decades or more. Uh, we came up with this project, Rua Direita, um, subdivided into several different projects. Uh, it's, uh, it's ninety different roads. Those were the ancient roads of the city, the, the, the agri, uh, uh, greek road, um, um, or rural paths that we still have and that are now streets, that mo- mo- most of them are in very poor conditions, very dire conditions. So we are transforming this sort of spaces into this sort of spaces. We are trying to, to qualify this, 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 this urban, this urban reality. Um, trying to, if you want, to expand the good moment that the city is undergoing, not on, not only, uh, to the city centre, but to all citizens, no matter where, where they live in the, in the city of, of Porto, but not losing sight of this scale, of this human scale, of this rural, um, ambience that you still have, which is a, which is an urban value that we want to safeguard. The last chapter, uh, I'm going to be really fast, is using the immaterial as a tool. That's something that is really important in, in, in increasing the social and territorial cohesion of, of the city. And it's one of the, you know, um, novelties that this mayor brought to the management of the city of Porto. Never, never, uh, never a mayor of the city of Porto, and I dare say in the nation, uh, have, have put so much effort and money into the, the, the cultural, uh, the cultural agenda of, of the city. Uh, almost ten percent of the budget of the municipality is destined to the cultural activity of the municipality. Be it in building new venues for the cultural, for the cultural, uh, activity, for cultural activities, for instance, um, sustaining the development of the eastern part of the city in, uh, important new, uh, new buildings and venues for the cultural and, and economical, uh, activity of the city. For instance, this one is the retrofitting of the former slaughterhouse of the city into a new cultural and enterprise centre. We launched a tender, a private entity one, uh, that private entity, that private company, um, presented, um, a project by Kengo Kuma, the Japanese, the Japanese architect. It's undergoing the construction of this, the building, uh, the construction of this new, um, economical slash cultural hub is undergoing, uh, it's going to be an interesting, what we want to, to, to do here is to bring a sexiness, if you want, to the eastern part of the city, which is always considered to be, well, uh, a lesser, a lesser territory in the, in the, in the municipality. We want to, you know, to change that psychogeography, that perception that people have, uh, about Campanha, turning it into, increasing the, 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 the interest that people have to go, to go there. Um, or using some, you know, uh, immaterial, uh, projects, like for instance, this one, we call it cultura expansão, or if you want, expanding culture, that has this slogan, this motto, taking the cultural offer where it belongs, which is everywhere. Um, this is bringing the high culture to every, every corner of the municipality. These are the venues that we've used so far, in, with festivals, concerts, performances, um, you know, uh, parties, you name it. For instance, we, we can bring the, the mayor, this guy with, with that broom is, is the mayor, doing something that I don't quite know what it is, but with, with, with the local, the local population, or having balls, or having, or bringing people to the city centre, to the city theatre, to show the result of, of work, workshops that we, that we do with the, with the, with the population. For instance, social neighbourhoods or housing associations, this one is a concept in a, in a neighbourhood association, and this one as well, or balls, like I, like I said, or, uh, you know, um, performances in the most unusual places. So yeah, this is really using, you know, cultural as the glue of the city. Uh, be it in terms of territory, but also in terms of social landscape, if you want. Uh, finally, and this is, this is the, the last, the last part of my presentation, talking about the brand of the city, the branding of the city and, and its brands. Well, one of the brands that the city has is obviously architecture, for those that are architects, which is a niche, but it's an important niche of tourist, the touristic activity we have in the city. Obviously, obviously, we are known for being a, a city of architects, so we, we are a small city, but we have, we do have two Pritzker prizes. This is Albert Seiza and Eduardo Tomora. They are present in the, their presence in the city and the presence of their, their buildings is pretty obvious. Another brand that we have in the city is FC Porto, the soccer, the soccer, uh, club with its station, with, uh, stadium, so with, with a strong physical presence in the city as well. Uh, or, uh, the wine, the port wine, which is not obviously produced in Porto, it's, it's produced in the countryside, in the, in the Upper Dorro Valley. It has a dramatic, um, the dramatic landscape, um, uh, you know, effect. But also in the urban fabric, it does a very, a very strong landscape effect. This is Villanovad Gaia, the south bank of River dor, just opposite Ribeira, opposite historical centre of Porto. Uh, well, the, the presence of the, the, the wine cellars is pretty obvious, so it is a brand, uh, in the city. But we, we did have a, we did have this, this, and this is one of my last slides. I think it's a good note to end on the, with, with port wine, uh, it's always good. Um, but we did have a, um, specificity in the city, which was British people and Spanish people, for instance, they used to call the city O Porto, with a O. Um, the, 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 the club is called FC Porto, the port, the, the, the wine is called Port Wine. So it was a mess. So we came up with a brand for the city and we said Porto, what is Porto? Well, Porto is Porto, period. That's what it's, uh, that's, that's the, the meaning of the, the city logo, um, which is being, uh, well, it's, it's, it, it was, it was a success story, this branding of, 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 of the city. This doesn't mean that we want to transform the city into a commodity, obviously, but we do have to have a, you know, a symbol of the city that people recognize and, 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 you know, that can relate to. And, uh, well, these, this, um, these letters, usually they're, they're in front of the city hall, that's the city hall, and there's always a queue to, 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 well, it's a photo opportunity as well. So, uh, in a nutshell, this is what we were, what, what we are trying to come up with in the city, uh, trying to transform the city into a global mid-side city, not losing its, its local, its strong local accent. And Anna knows that the accent of Porto is really strong in, in, in the nation. We are very known for, for our accent. I don't have that, that accent, but the, the majority of the people of, of the city do. Um, and in a nutshell, having a comfortable and interesting, uh, and interesting city, because if, if, if we take care of the city for ourselves, if we, if we come up with a comfortable and interesting city for its inhabitants, we have a comfortable and interesting city for the people that visit us, and that's what we are aiming for. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that this, this didn't take too long. Sorry for, for that.
Thank you, Pedro. Hossam, I'm not sure if you want to conclude. Um, Hossam, are you, you, you on the call still?
You fell asleep, I took too much, too long.
Um, I thought it was extremely interesting. I really enjoyed, um, listening to everything, quite a comprehensive talk, um, I must say, and for me, it was perfectly fine that it lasted, um, as long as it did, because I think you went into great depth to many of the subjects, and I was personally very pleased, um, to listen to those, especially ahead of our trip coming up for Porto on between the ninth and the thirteenth of May, which, um, I probably advertise again for all the Urban Design Group members. I think we're now moving on to the Q and A session, which I can open, um, to the audience. We have, um, thirty-five participants still. You can, um, raise your hands or, uh, pop the questions on the chat, and I will try to keep an order. I can see, you can physically raise your hand or through, um, through the Zoom, I can see David Lum has a question, David.
Yes, am I unmuted?
Yes, correct, we can hear you.
Good. Pedro, do you ever go home? No, you don't have to answer.
That's very, the, the clever question, that, that's a problem.
No, no, let's not, not, let's not dwell on that. Uh, it's just that five years ago, I remember visiting Porto and you were very hospitable and you invited us into your office and we talked. And, um, it's now five years ago. I really must come back now in this trip, uh, to see exactly what you're up to. But just to get, uh, into the cultural thing, which was interesting, it's a pity, it was your last session and you, you admitted to sort of compacting it, and you talked about the arts as a cultural thing. I'd just like to focus down on the citizens of Porto, um, because you as an architect stroke politician are in a very good position to, uh, if you like, um, respond to the question about involvement of citizens or citizen involvement, as we call it over here, uh, in England. Um, what, what, how do you, how would you sort of encapsulate your relationship with the citizens of, uh, of, um, Porto when it comes to urban regeneration? Do you think you have got it, um, taped? Is it a problem? Um, is it a political situation, or is it, uh, a sort of, if you like, partnership situation where some cities in Western Europe do show a really excellent, um, relationship between those who govern and those who don't?
Should I answer, uh, straight away or?
Yes, please, yes.
Yeah, um, well, it, it depends on your definition of urban regeneration. Uh, there are some words, there are some decisions, and this is not very popular, and I know it's not in tune with the, with the spirit of the times, if you want, but some of the works really have to come from, from top down. Some of the decisions are, it, their benefits are only comprehensive, comprehensible, because the people only understand them um, after they, they are, they are made. For instance, building a new, a new, uh, metro line, uh, coming up with a, with a metro bus system. Uh, these are things that our, that we are struggling to, uh, you know, to demonstrate uh, with, uh, with, uh, with examples from other cities, other European cities. Look, go to Nantes and see how, how that works. Go to here, go to there, look at there, because it's a bit of a nightmare to have this, the, 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 the sheer amount of, of works that, that we do, that we do these days, um, without seeing the benefits. I know that in five years' time, when everything is concluded and everything is, is done and, and the systems are, are working, people will not remember, uh, these periods. Uh, like people don't remember what we've struggled in the beginning of the century with the, with the works in, uh, in the, the European city of culture. But in this period, it is a top-down, for those kind of works, it is a top-down approach. But for instance, building that new, um, park that I've shown in between different, uh, social neighbourhoods, we had several, several meetings, participatory meetings with the people that lived in those, in those neighbourhoods. They were co-designing, if I can say, if I can say so, uh, the, the end result of the park. So it, it depends. It's, it's not one size fits all. It depends on, on what you're doing, who the citizens are. Uh, because another thing that I, I personally saw, uh, throughout this, well, six years, almost seven, that I'm the city councillor, is that if you launch a participatory process without clear boundaries and a strategy, that participation is always instrumentalized by the usual suspects, you know? The same people every time. So you get up, you, 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 you get caught in agendas that are, that are just that, agendas. So yet, you know, you, sometimes you have to, uh, to take, it's better not to, to do a participatory, in a nutshell. It's better not to do a participatory process if it's not well structured and, and with it, with, with the boundaries clearly, clearly set. Uh, because in the end of the day, I shouldn't, as a, as a, and this is, this is, this, this is larger than the urban department or urbanistic department, it's, it's a, a personal belief that I have. I was elected to have the burden of decision. I was not elected to start processes of trying to, you know, you decide and I just sign. You understand what I mean? So if I take a bad decision, it's on me. And people have all the right in one and a half year not to vote for me or not to vote for the, for my party, if I'm, if I was a member of the party, or not to vote for the mayor and so on. So it's my democratic responsibility to have the burden of decision. Does that mean that I'm in the hybrid tower and don't listen to anyone and take this? No, it's the opposite, obviously. But in the, in the end of the day, the, the decision, the burden of decision, which is a burden, it's on the political, you know, sphere of, of, of management. But we do, again, this being said, we, we do have some projects that are very successful, because from, from scratch, we started doing so, doing them in a, a participatory, uh, you know, strategy. The thing is, it takes much longer. So if you want to fix roads that are in very derelict conditions and you, and you have, and you have four years to do so, you have to, to run against the clock, you know, you know what I mean? So we don't do a participatory, uh, pro, uh, process. But if your project is, is, is due to take, well, I know, I don't know, six years, which is probably the, the amount of time that we, we used for, for that park, then you should, you should work with, with people, you know? So it's, it's not one size fits all, it depends.
Thank you. A very comprehensive answer, Pedro, and, uh, very interesting.
Thank you. Um, I think the only hand up is yours, David. Have we got any other, um, so, because I can't see, would you mind taking your hand down in case you don't have any other questions, so I can see if there's another one? Thank you. This, I've got some. Are there any other questions? Um, there's Robert here.
Yeah, um, a lot of, uh, what European and maybe British cities, towns and cities have no real vision for the, for the future of that city, and that's what's been astounding in the presentation that you've given, um, is projecting a proud and energetic future for Porto, whereas, uh, English towns and cities, they tend to be many oblied by piecemeal development that doesn't add up to a, a greater whole. Um, the governance is generally by national political parties, and this is a trend that was observed whoa, um, forty years ago, that local government elections were based on national political parties. So what would you advise, um, England or Scotland or Wales? Um, how to get people involved in the council who will have a vision for the future of the town and not become bogged down in matters about collection of waste or potholes or repairing roads, but really a, an ambitious future?
Well, that's a difficult question, because I'm, I don't think I'm in a position to advise England, Wales and Scotland of anything to be, to be completely, to be completely honest. But I can, well, it all came up, the, the part thing, uh, uh, as I said, this is a pretty unique political situation. Uh, only Porto is governed by a, well, it's not the only city governed by an independent council or, and mayor, but the, there, there are several, there, there are difficulties, there, there are differences in between the independence of the political, uh, um, agendas and, and people. Because all the other cities that I know, that are governed by a, by a, an independent mayor in, in Portugal, the mayor used to belong to, to a political party and it, he or she went out of the political party and became independent. Uh, that's not the case in Porto. This was an organized civic movement uh, that proposed a new mayor, that was never, that, that, that wasn't a professional politician, if you want, never had, that never was. He was a businessman, a successful businessman, a well-known guy, because he was on television commenting on football and so on, but he was a businessman. And I think that's one of the specificities of this city council, is that this approach, this pragmatic approach, our criteria is never an ideological criteria, but rather a pragmatical criteria. We want to, to have things done and we can, can work with the central right or the central left and... but rather a pragmatical criteria. We want to have things done and we can work with the central right or the central left and whatever. Because again, what we want to do is to improve our city and not taking care of, you know, party's agendas and party people. And that's one good aspect of it. Why he chose this adventure of becoming a mayor, I cannot answer for him. But I'm pretty much sure that it's based on this enormous sense of belonging, pride and love for the city that pretty much characterizes the population of Porto. And that's something that has a lot to do with being the second city of the nation, you know? You know what I mean? There's always this, you know, this, I wouldn't call it a struggle, but this ongoing thing about the capital and the others, namely the second city. We were never a capital of the nation. Lisbon is. We had other capitals. Porto was never a capital of anything. It's a very, pretty much independent city in its soul, if you want. And I think that was probably one of the drives for the mayor. In personal terms, I chose to accept the invitation to become part of the list of the mayor in being elected politician, which is pretty uncommon for an architect here, and I imagine in the UK as well. The drive was probably the same that led me to want to become an architect in the first place, which is having the ability to change the physical reality where my fellow citizens live, influence their happiness, if you want. This is very, you know, this is almost psych analysis. And if you want a small degree of, you know, of pride and honor to try to improve my city and to live something whenever I, in the moment I leave office, you know? How to convince people to do so? I'm trying to convince myself every single day that it was a good idea, to be completely honest. And it's, well, it's a mess, it's underpaid, it's a lot of work, your name is in the newspaper, people approach you in your social media, trying to complain this, this, this and that. And sometimes you have, you know, sometimes you have to convince yourself, hang on, this is the, you know, this is the darker, this is the dark side of the moon, but there's a shiny side of the moon and you should look at it. Yeah, but in the end of the day, it's... And this is really quite personal. I felt it was almost a duty, having the opportunity to, you know, to bring to the table some of the things I was taught in school and was trying to implement as an architect and as a professional in the role of a decision-maker. And the paradox is that I now feel that I'm fulfilling much more my, you know, my vocation as an architect now that I'm not doing architecture than I was when I was doing, you know, plans and projects, which is quite a paradoxical thing to say, but it is quite true.
That sounds extremely interesting. That sounds really interesting. So, sorry. I was just, I'm just conscious that we've got some other questions and we have, you know, eight minutes more. So I really want to make sure that we can still get your views on some very interesting questions that popped up in the chat. The first is from, now probably read the two, the first is from Leanne about how would you approach establishing a relationship between a historical field with modern construction? And could you advise with regards to use of historical alternatives to concrete? To which I would add, I think this is really interesting, one of my questions too. How do you deal with this aspect of character? You showed some examples. And how do you deal with sustainability into this, I think is part of this question? Because obviously we've got to deal with climate change adaptation, different materials, things like, you know, water conservation, shading to public spaces. And that was actually my question when I saw some of your examples, because that is a big challenge in city regeneration. So that's the first question. I'll read the second, just conscious of time. These are big questions. The second one is from a student, pardon, an architect lecturer at Glasgow School of Art, Mackintosh School of Architecture, who are visiting Porto in November to take the students in their final design thesis about the ethical city and are interested in examples about ethical architecture from your cases.
Perhaps the second one I can answer by writing via email. I think it's probably more useful rather than trying to come up on my head for specific areas. But yeah, I think it's an interesting approach to, yeah, to these matters of urban renewal and so on. Regarding, well, sustainability of the retrofitting or renewal or rehabilitation of the city. That's a huge word, sustainability, because sustainability, as everybody knows, has a lot to do with, well, environment and climate change and so on and so forth. But taking care of people is also sustainability, social sustainability, improving the living conditions and the job opportunities is sustainability, economical sustainability. So if you look at that word, sustainability, in a broader sense, that's one of the bases of what we are trying to come up with. A city that offers opportunities for people to emancipate themselves economically, improving their quality of life, turning them into true citizens instead of just inhabitants of the city. All those are issues or aspects of sustainability. Regarding the specific use of concrete, yes, I think that's a huge challenge we are facing. Because sustainability means having enough affordable housing for the people that are struggling in the market and they don't find rentals or houses to be bought that are compatible with their own incomes. So we are talking about economically and social sustainability. But to do so, we do have to increase the housing stock. We can do so much using already built units and retrofitting them or renewing them. But I'm completely convinced that we do need to increase the housing stock as a whole, meaning we need more construction and we need more construction fast. And to be completely honest, I don't know how you can do that without using concrete in this day and age. Because we do have some interesting experiences of modular systems, of timber construction, of steel construction, but those are not still in this nation scalable to the amount of units that we need to deliver in the next four to eight years. Regarding the use of concrete in the specific problem of the urban rehabilitation of the historical center, now that's something that we are very careful about. Because being a UNESCO site, we are obliged to periodically report to the UN, to UNESCO, the state and the territory, namely safeguarding the values, the pre-existing values in terms of construction technologies, you know, construction typologies and so on and so forth. We did have a pretty dark period where almost all the rehabilitation only maintained the facades of the buildings, destroying everything inside. That stopped, especially in the city center. So we are not trying to, you know, to promote reusing the already built structures, well, reinforcing them when they need so. But that's also a very sustainable attitude. If it's already built, don't destroy it and build something new. Build on top of it, build, using it. Because by doing so, you diminish the number of, you know, journeys of new materials that come to the construction site and so on and so forth. I don't need to go into details with this audience. So yeah, this is a conundrum. In the generic city, let's put it like that, the city from the seventies, eighties and nineties, all the housing stock is, well, based on concrete construction. In those territories, we will have to have more housing stocks. That is unavoidable. And in this current day and age, I'm still pretty much dependent on cement and on concrete. On the historical sites, the material culture and the construction culture of those territories should be safeguarded in order not to lose urban value and changing it into economical value, namely tourism. So that's a balance that we are trying to come up with in the city. And there's a lot to do with construction, but also with the use of the public space and with the use of the building stock. So that we don't transform the city center into a Disneyland, a generic city, and by doing so, destroying value. We want to add value and not destroy value.
Thank you. I think we still have a couple of minutes. I'll ask another question. With regards of the funding for all the projects that you're undergoing, it's my understanding is that there isn't a lot of production within the city. So you probably have some sources of income from central government, taxation, as in council tax. You don't charge tourism, I presume? Is that something you're considering? Because obviously they put a lot of pressure on to public services. And just one last reflection associated with that as part of the question. I think in some aspects, using culture very interestingly, but there's a side of it is very much about the consumption of culture that is normally associated with tourism. I wonder whether there's scope for some small productive activities that are linked to that. And the reason why I say this is because one of the challenges of small cities or second cities are really to to sort of kickstart the evolutionary economic process, where they haven't got a lot of industry and you haven't because of the nature of the boundaries. And so I think some of the ways to kickstart that is really look at local production and find ways to link that with other activities, i.e. knowledge, technology, education, which you expressed that you have. So this is, I guess, is a bold question about funding and about the sort of economic future of the city, whether it's through its own self-funding, you know, dependence on local government and taxes versus its own production and generating productive capabilities.
Okay, yeah. Regarding funding, well, the percentage of money that comes from the central government is pretty small. But pretty small. Majority of the municipal budget is, well, it's generated in the city, namely property tax, urban licensing tax, selling and buying property pays municipal tax as well in Portugal. Tourism accounts for, well, fifteen to twenty million euros a year because with the city tax. And we do have a specific tax that's a nationwide tax, but it's locally collected, resulting from the economical activity. So all the companies that are based in the city pay a small amount of tax to the municipality. And we've had an increase in our budget of four times in the last ten years. The first time the mayor was elected, our budget was roughly one hundred and fifty, one hundred and twenty million euros. Now it's four hundred and fifty to five hundred million euros per year. That's the budget of the municipality, of the city council. So we did undergo a very good economical period of resurgence. That had a lot to do with attracting economic activity, not only tourism. It accounts for, I don't know, I don't have the correct figure, but probably fifteen to twenty percent of the local economy, perhaps fifteen percent, something like that. But we are a service-based city with a lot of companies. And our struggle is to change the, you know, the matrix of our economic activity, trying to retain talent, trying to increase the knowledge-based, you know, economy, if you want. We are a very vibrant startup city. We do have this large urban asset, which is our academy. As I said, it's the largest in the city. So it's pretty much, well, a very diverse economy, urban economy. We do have a large industrial belt around the city of Porto, but that is not in the municipality of Porto. But that industrial belt means that there's a lot of services associated with the industry that, well, they tend to prefer settling in the city center that again acts as a city center of this larger metropolitan area. We know that this is not... I'm not saying it's not sustainable, but we know that this increase is bound to flatten, you know, the curve. So we are now being very cautious in designing our budgets, not to, you know, again, in a sustainable, with a sustainable preoccupation or worries, not to, you know, to give steps larger than our length, like we say in Portuguese. So be very prudent in allocating budget that might jeopardize the activity of the municipality in the next few years, five years to ten years, in the medium term. A large part of these investments that you saw, for instance, the metro, some of the housing projects that you saw are paid using European money, namely the new generation European funds after the pandemic with renewal and, what's the name of it, Perif? Recovery and resilience funds from the European Union. We've allocated them, well, we as a nation, to building or to expanding the metro systems in Lisbon and Porto, so in the mobility area, but also in housing area, which is a good thing that the Portuguese government managed to convince the European Commission to, for the first time, allocate some European money in order to increase the housing stock because of the housing shortage. And at the same time, as I said briefly, we are trying actively to bring along, to bring about private investments that is profitable in a PPP scheme. So as I said, trying to align the public interest with the private initiative. So we are using all the tools available to come up with this, with these projects that we have. Some of what I've shown you is already being built, some is in its project stage and some is in planning stage. So we are looking at a city that we want to be in ten to fifteen to twenty years. That's one of the things that, you know, we are used to as urban planners. We are always thinking one decade ahead, I think. Regarding the cultural activity and tourism and education, well, that's precisely what we are trying to do. We're trying to spread the touristic fluxes or the tourist activity from outside of the two to four square kilometers in the city center and trying to come up with different, you know, attractors in the rest of the territory. Because we feel that we are not in an over-tourism situation. So we don't have too much tourism in terms of absolute numbers, but we are starting to see phenomenons in the city center of over-tourism. So it's an hyper-concentration of this activity in a small area of the city that we want to disperse to other parts of the city and also to other cities in the region. So that's something that we don't want less tourism. We want tourism to be spread in a larger territory. But to be honest, the cultural activity for us is completely... It has nothing to do with this strategy regarding tourism. It has a lot to do of promoting the production of culture by the citizens and the consumption of culture by the citizens, being the citizens high-end or poor, you know? That's why we are bringing, again, workshops, production workshops, teaching people to make music, to dance, to do whatever, and using spots as well. But also trying to work with the local populations in some deprived areas for them to, for instance, produce music, produce dance and bring them to the stage of the city. So doing the opposite, going to the places where people are, empowering them, well, teaching them, which is an awful word to be used in this context, but to work with them so that they find models of emancipation that don't rely on crime and drugs only. Because otherwise, what they see is that those who manage to, you know, escape from poverty are the ones that go in the wrong path. We have to provide them other alternatives for them to... We have to provide them other alternatives for them to fulfill themselves and to be happy. Uh, that's, that's our obligation as a, as a, you know, as a public entity, to to promote that emancipation. Social emancipation and economical emancipation to all structures of of society. That's the stress we want to to put on the, on the, on the, uh, touristy, on the cultural activity. And at the same time, safeguarding the identity of the city so that our touristic product is not destroyed by the touristic activity. Because nobody wants to come to Porto and see a generic city, people want to come to Porto to know Porto. Like I want to know other cities, the way they live, whenever I visit them.
Thank you, that is very comprehensive and really, really inspiring, um, I should say. I don't know if there are more questions, but I'm conscious that we've already exceeded our time by nine minutes. So I'm afraid we're gonna have to leave more of the questions for when we meet you in Porto.
Oh, my question.
The tenth of May, I suppose, when you're gonna kindly guide us through, um, some of the projects and we can see by ourselves. I want to thank everyone for being on the talk, you, Pedro in particular, the Urban Design Group for organizing. And Hassan, who did all the, all the contacts and kindly has been leading the engagement with you. Uh, thank you all so much for attending and we'll see you soon, hopefully in Porto, thank you.